I want to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the 12,601st meeting of the Lee Board of Selects.
Who's going?
I will open with public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please. Come to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes. Raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and welcome to come up. Do we have any takers? All right, we'll move on. We will move on to the lady that just walked in, Linda Reinhold. Got here just in time.
Okay. I ran up the stairs. Do I have to go over there?
Yes, you do.
Oh, okay.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, I will. Okay. Sorry. Linda Reinhold, Town Clerk Tax Collector. I just ran upstairs. I am here, actually, it was almost a year ago today that I was here, asking if we would hire, or if you would hire, Liz Stone as the Assistant Town Clerk Tax Collector. And now I am asking you to promote, or appoint her to Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector. Tax Collector, excuse me. Over the past, well, ten months, eleven months, Elizabeth has demonstrated dedication. She's great with the customers. She has gone to many trainings, but like me, we're always learning. And I feel that she is capable of running the office without me there, which she has done on a few occasions. And so I'm asking if you would appoint her to Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector.
Okay. Any questions, any comments?
No.
Okay, I move to approve the appointment of Elizabeth Stone as Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector for the town of Lee. You get a second?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now you can run back down.
She does do a great job, really.
She does, yes. And customers love her, and she goes above and beyond all the time. And she's a joy to work with, so it's a win-win. And she did the walk with us on Sunday.
Yes, she did.
She did.
And she went to movie night.
Yeah. More and more dress.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have one today. You're okay? And I don't have one. Throw out the lifeline. Okay. We'll move on to number four, Mr. Selectman Bugby on Legislative Policies.
That's what I forgot. I will tell you that they tweaked a few of them. I contacted HMA today, and the revised list should be done end of this week or next week, so I'll forward it to you what they specifically said. There was probably, at least probably eight or ten of them that they tweaked language-wise. But the other ones, they passed. I think there was one that they didn't pass out, which was on the deals. But I'll forward that to the Town Administrator, and she can send it to you when they get done, so.
Okay. All right, we're on the roll. Number five, Kerry Brown, Chairman, Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I would request, I would request to be appointed as the representative from the board to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Why?
Why? Well, because I really feel as though, it's interesting, everybody kind of smiles when you say here. I think that they, that it's really a serious concern. And how it's going to get resolved, as I think about it honestly, I don't know. And some of the resolutions I could think about could possibly have funding issues that, I mean, we already have a plate full of funding issues for next year, if we consider, you know, what the school might have, what the TCVC might have, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to kind of be involved early, just to see what kind of issues come up, what direction it's going to take, and so on.
If I move to appoint Mr. Kerry Brown to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion Kerry's. Congratulations.
But we didn't ask him qualifications. He didn't fill out those forms either, so.
He can be a retroactive doing of the form.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
They want us fired, huh? Okay, no problem. What goes around, choose to eat it.
Excuse me, can I butt in? I'm not on the agenda, but I spoke to the Town Administrator about an issue that has been brought up, and she-
Oh, really?
Said I could come tonight.
Okay.
So I want to start by saying that I think that the swap shop is a wonderful idea. However, I need to bring to this board's attention issues that it causes in town. And it's not that it causes, it causes is a bad word, it enables issues that we have in town. Today, we got a, I cannot release any location or information, but today we had yet another serious hoarding instance. And I recognize the woman, because she is a frequent, she, I believe, was, if not still is, a volunteer at the swap shop, and she's a frequent visitor of the swap shop. And a lot of the items get brought to her very unsafe home. It's one of six that I've been called to in the last few years, hoarding instances, that all relate back to the swap shop. So it's my request, I know if the police chief would have come tonight, had he not already taken another responsibility, so he would like to speak to this too, and I would like to get with Toby Van Aken, and maybe somebody represented from the swap shop. We need to somehow help people by not letting them take up so much stuff home. I know that it's, the swap shop is a wonderful thing, and I'm not against the swap shop, but if you saw what I saw today, that we're contributing to, the Town Administrator saw the pictures, unfortunately, I cannot share those pictures, but it would make you absolutely cool, I mean, Julie, help me, it's pretty bad.
Okay. Are you talking about where at a residence?
At a residence.
Okay.
With a child.
Okay. And, I mean, we've had those issues before.
We've had issues on Gary Road, the stuff was outside, it was thrown in the middle of the street. A house on another part of town that was out in the yard. It's, there's-
Now, let me just ask you a question, Karen. What I'm confused about is, what is it you propose we do? When we see them come to the swap shop, say no?
I don't think we can necessarily, in a perfect world, right now, after seeing what I saw today, like, whole thing closed. Is that an answer to the problem? It's going to help the problem? Is it the political thing to do? No.
You want to close the swap shop?
After what I saw today, I would love to close the swap shop. Because it just contributes to these problems that we have throughout town. And I understand hoarding is a sickness, I do. But-
But we have a lot of townsfolk that use the swap shop.
Right, so closing it isn't the, right, but we have people that don't. So we need to do something, or I'm asking this board to please do something to control how much people take out of the swap shop.
Okay.
I mean, it's only-
Do you have any suggestions on what that might be?
Other than closing?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's a dead fish.
Yeah, I don't know. I could limit the amount of time that they can be there, the amount of trips. I don't know what we can do.
Well, I mean, we could arbitrarily say no more than two items per visitor. I'm just saying, we could say that.
We had an issue with a person in town not that long ago, who was a volunteer at the swap shop, and they were told they can't bring things home when they volunteer, so then they just don't volunteer, they go in their off time. I mean, that's, it's a problem.
My suggestion is, of course, we, I thought we had a sign that you couldn't be there any longer than fifteen minutes, or something along that way. It used to be.
Used to be parked, I think you can't park for more than fifteen minutes.
No, it was, you couldn't be there.
You couldn't be in the room longer, loitering for more than fifteen minutes.
I mean, if, I guess if you're truly a hoarder, it doesn't take too many minutes to gather up a bunch of stuff.
No, it's-
You know, the other thing we can do is, well, education is the only way to go about doing this, is put something in the equator if these people get it, and if we can get someone who's responsible to give us a statement about how hoarding is a problem. Or maybe we at least put it in the equator, or have Toby put something on a marquee out there that talks about such things.
What about bringing in equal amount? If you're going to take out five items, you gotta bring five items in.
I think all these ideas are wonderful. Part of the issue, though, is policing it.
Right.
That's an issue.
Yes.
That means we're putting a burden on the volunteers to clock people.
Well, who are the hoarders versus just somebody who's coming in there?
Now, I just-
Well, thank you for bringing to our attention, it's not supposed to ponder.
And maybe this is something you can bring to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I mean, I know they've already got, I mean, they've already got a lot on their list of things to address, but.
It's a good idea.
I can tell you that there were several of us there today, and we were all just, he was one, it was just-
Where you went to the house, you mean?
Yeah, we got called.
So- By?
I got called by the fire chief, because I'm the health officer, Bill's my assistant.
So what laws has this person broken, other than having this case of hoarding?
The laws that has been broken in this instance, with the town, none.
With who, then? Why, I guess, why are you involved if there's-
I'm involved because I'm the health officer.
So-
And a public health nuisance, and children involved.
What law or laws has this person broken?
Health officer laws, turned out there wasn't any.
Okay.
Because there is running water, even though they chose not to use it.
Okay.
So after that was investigated, no health officer laws.
So basically, we're trying to control behavior of an individual?
But basically, I'm asking the board to try to help in-
Hoarding in general.
Hoarding in general, because where, and by having the swap shop, in my experience, we're enabling hoarders. And I realize it's a sickness, I understand that, and I feel terrible. And in my dealings with the hoarding situations, they've all been people that I've recognized from the swap shop, that hang out at the swap shop and/or have been volunteers at the swap shop.
Solid Waste Committee, you've got a new charge.
And it's, I have to bring it to your attention, because, you know, you guys need to know what's going on out there.
Let me ask you a question. Is this the only hoarder we have that we know of?
Nope.
Or that you've been involved with?
Nope. In my experience, they all stem back to the swap shop.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take it up with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and see if there's a pathway there. If not, I'll return and give a report on what you think. I'm concerned about how we enforce something like this, but see what we do.
Thank you.
Open for suggestions from anybody, because it's going to be a difficult.
It is difficult, and I just feel bad. It's like, we're helping them. And I know it's, you know, we have to think of everybody, but Scott, if you could see what I saw, you wouldn't be sure-
Oh, no, I've seen hoarders before, but I think we're intruding into some private business. It's unfortunate that they have that, but-
Oh, absolutely, that's why I'm a health officer, because they own the house, there was only so much I could do. It was the child's welfare and the public water, and then that's all we could do. Understandable, but my thing is, is we have people out there that have a problem, and we're contributing to that problem.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen. So we're going to move on to Julie Glover.
We're going to talk again about the LED conversion project. I believe Mr. Benzes is here to present some information.
Jim Benzes. I was asked last time to come up with a return on investment, how fast what we would want to do would pay off, doing it the way I'm proposing. I want to point out that the LED conversion company that presented a proposal, their return on investment was five and a half years, and if the co-op contributed some money, and if they, if the town looked at the maintenance reduction, not having changed many lamps, because they wouldn't be burning out as fast, that took the return on investment down to 4.3 years. That's giving you one of the competitors' interest. I don't have an answer for return on investment, but I'm going to tell you how you can figure it out, because it's different for each lamp, each place where it's used. So I trust everybody's gotten a copy of what I brought in. There's really three phases to what I'm proposing to do. The first phase, the very easy, low-hanging fruit, is to change out LED, T8 LED tubes like this, simply remove them and put in, I mean, fluorescent tubes, take the fluorescents out and put in LEDs. And there is UL happiness with this, the ballasts we know about, and they're in agreement with the UL labeling of the lamps. We have about 500 of these lamps, and 80 lamps that are in the shape of a U, where the space is half the shape, half to be a square, two-by-two square instead of two-by-four square. It doesn't mean we want to change all of them, but that would be, anyway, that would be the first one, and we could get started tomorrow. My proposal is that the LED lamps would, tubes would come from Home Depot, the brand that they sell is Philips, which is a very well-known European company, it's like GE in this country, been around a long time. And they have T8 LED tubes, either the straight ones or the bent ones, at attractive price, and Home Depot, I think, is a good place to do business. I've looked at lots of things online, and there's all kinds of stuff out there, and companies that don't even know what they have online. They give me different prices when I ask for it in writing than they have online, and kind of crazy. Anyway, the second phase of the work would be what I call man lift work. Work that requires a machine to lift a person up in the air to do the work. This would be the lights in the equipment base for the fire department, the lights in the high bay area and the transfer station, plus lights on poles outside and some of the wall packs. So that all the work would be done that used a man lift, and it'll all be done at once, because man lifts is rented by the day, and we want to maximize the use of it in one day. And then Phase Three is what I call other. Things that either weren't included in the list that the town put out, like the swap shop, or elevator, there's one particular entrance light in this building, there's a storage room in the dump, there's a bulky shed which has light fixtures that the can-do people put up years ago that are not UL listed for mounting on a surface, so they would have to be changed. That would be Phase Three. So, let's talk about totals. About 500 T8s would need to be, well, as many as 500 could be done. And we would have a choice, depending on the color of the T8. If we go with a rather bluish white, it would be $5.35, by my estimate, to change each. If we go with a more yellow color, a $4,000 color, that would be $8.62, quite a bit more money, but the advantage of the yellow is it's better for people's health. So we might decide to have a mix, and put the blue-white ones in corridors and places like that, a little like this, and then places where people work all the time, have the more yellow. T5s, that's the smaller lamps, they're the ones used in the large clusters in the fire station, in the transfer station. Those, we have a couple of brands that we could choose from, and the number of dollars would be somewhere in the range of $3,000 if we did them all. The U-tubes, T8 U-tubes, there's 80 of them, they're much more money, and they're much more expensive, about $1,400. We did pole lights, about $1,500, wall packs, about $3,000. That's if we did all of them. Looking at additional considerations, that's Page Three. This is things that are not spelled out clearly in the town's request for quotation. The elevator needs to have something done to it, because the light in there is T12, not T8. So we either have an electrician change the ballast to a T8 ballast, which would be consistent with most of the other lighting in the building, or put in a LED fixture directly. You change the whole fixture, or, and that's not priced, they don't have any price for any of that. There is an entrance light in this building that is different than everything else, I have not included that, it's shown as 400 hours a year, so it probably doesn't pay back very well. There's a storage room in the transfer station, there's one eight-foot lamp, light fixture, that has very low hours usage, probably not worth changing, but I guess you could if you wanted to. And then I mentioned that there's 17 light fixtures in the transfer station that are not used correctly with regard to UL's requirements. Those should be changed out, electrician can change that. There's lights in the fire station, vertical lights on the posts between the doors, fluorescent lights. Those, my recommendation is to get them out and just get rid of them. The reason they're there is, when the building was built, the first lights in the fire bay were halogen, were-
So they're metal halide?
Yeah, metal halide, metal halide lamps, which take about three minutes to warm up. So when there'd be a fire call in the middle of the night, the guys come over, turn the lights on, and they'll go on very fast, so they got any light to get the engines ready to go out. So they installed fluorescent lights vertically on the walls between the doors, so they could turn something on and go on right away and have light. You don't need them anymore, because you don't have metal halides. And the swap shop has lighting in it that was never considered in the request for quotation, because it wasn't there at the time. So that needs to have something done. There's five three-lamp fixtures, T8 fixtures, inside the building. And outside the building, I had donated some architectural exterior lighting, which we then didn't put on. Once I realized this was going on, I stopped, because it's metal halide, and the number of hours is so small, it would be crazy not to take a freeman and put it on, rather than buy something for hundreds of dollars. Anyway, that's Page Three. Now, looking at payback time, that's the big one that everybody asks about. Page Four, T8 Payback. Now, that's these lamps. The lamp costs $4.25. I figure labor to change each lamp at $0.50. That's my estimate, so I could certainly be wrong on that. Disposal cost of $0.60. I went to Toby, I want to know what he pays to get rid of fluorescent lamps, because we have to show that as a cost. Certainly, if a contractor did it, they would take care of that, so we have to take care of that. And what I learned is very interesting. He looked up on a chart what he pays. He pays $0.65 a foot to get rid of lamps, which is about two and a half bucks, get rid of that. And I was stunned, because in Grainger, you can buy a box, and that box includes disposal fee, and you fill it up with lamps, and close it up, UPS picks it up, takes it away, and they're disposed of correctly. And that, one of the boxes is $1,200, and it would hold 1,800 lamps, which is $0.60. The town would get a discount from Grainger, so it's about $0.60 a lamp for T8s. Much, much less than what we're paying now. So that's something that should be looked at independently of the LED work. And since we now have-
I mean, I guess I haven't been looking, do people necessarily turn in lamps that are not broken? I mean, I gotta tell you, when I take a fluorescent lamp down, a lot of times, they end up just being, just broken in the bottom of the bag.
Well, that's not the way you normally would want to do that, because there's mercury in there. Tiny amount of mercury, but there's mercury in there. And so in New Hampshire, it's not legal to break a lamp. Not with an accident, right? An accident, but to deliberately break a lamp. In fact, that brings up an interesting thing, because one of the things that Grainger sells, they sell a lamp crushing system. So you buy a drum, you mount the crusher on top of the drum, there's all kinds of air cleaning things and everything, and you feed the lamps in there, and it polarizes them, and captures the vapors that come out. And when the drum is full, you ship it off, and you get another drum. But that's not legal in New Hampshire. It's legal in most states, but not here. Because that's breaking the lamp, and you're not allowed to break the lamp. Even if you're breaking it correctly, I didn't consider that. So let's look at this T8 payback. We're looking at a total cost, by my estimate, of $5.35 for the bluish T8 lamp. If we price electricity at $0.17 a kilowatt hour, which is what you paid a month ago, so that's, I think, a fair number. The $5.35 represents 31.5 kilowatt-hours of electricity. So when we have saved 31.5 kilowatt-hours, we have paid for that lamp. And everything beyond that is now gravy. And it takes 3,000 hours to use 31.5 kilowatt-hours with that lamp. The savings, the savings over what's there now. So in 3,000 hours, that lamp has paid for itself. Now, what's the return on investment? Now, that's a different question. If we go to the appendix that the town sent out, which I've labeled A through D, you will see that there's an annual number of hours for every light that they represented, and there's about 70 lights. So if we pick something, let's pick number nine, it's the interview room, and they say it's on lit three hours a week for 156 hours a year. Those lamps would take 20 years to pay back, because you're hardly ever using them. On the other hand, we go down to the chief's office, 40 hours a week, that's over 2,000 hours, so a year and a quarter, a year and a half or so, you've paid for the return on investment, and you've paid for it. So where there's long usage of the hours, the payback becomes short in terms of years. Where there is little usage, the payback doesn't occur very fast, and for all practical purposes, in many instances, doesn't pay back. So that's why I don't have a number like the LED guys did, they gave you five years or whatever. They took the whole thing and mixed it all together, and that's the average. I'm looking at different ones, some of which are very long and some of which are short. So we can apply, now that we know 3,000 hours is the payback on a T8 bluish lamp, we can then look at all of the places where that is used, and determine which ones pay off quickly and which ones pay off slowly. If we were to go to the 4,000, or the more yellow light, the payback on that is $4,800. So it takes longer, but that's likely to be used in an office which would be on board, so it probably, in terms of years, would not be so far out. If that were the chief's office, it'd be a little over two years. The U-tubes, U-tubes are quite expensive compared to the others. I put in more labor, more disposal cost, because they won't go in the same box, so when we're looking at it, I'm looking at $18 lamps, and that takes 10,000 hours pay back. That's a long time. And some of them aren't used very much. If we looked at some of them, we'll see that they're in rooms like restroom, you know, two hours a week, 100 hours a year, for 10,000, that'd be 100 years to pay back. So you might decide not to change that, if you want to have a minimal expense, you just leave it. When it burns out, we'll put an LED in there. It may not burn out in the lifetime of the bathroom or something. So that's a choice that can be made. Now, going to Page Five, we have the same thing with the T5 lamps, and I've got a couple of brands in there. Home Depot does not sell the T5 from Philips, unfortunately. Philips is quite expensive, and I think that Home Depot wanted to stay away from the high cost. So they have a different brand, a brand, a company that makes a whole variety of all kinds of stuff, so it isn't like they've never been around. You'll notice I put in much higher labor for changing the lamp, because that man lift is in there. And that, I'm figuring man lift's $400, $500 a day, and we've got a couple hundred lamps to do, plus people on it and everything else. The disposal cost is actually a little bit lower, because the T5s are smaller. So the T5 bought from Home Depot, 97 kilowatt-hours, or it pays off in $3,200, basically the same thing as a T8 blue. If we were to go to a competing brand that charges a smaller amount of money, we have the ability to pay off a little bit faster. You notice I put freight in there, because that's bought over the internet, and the home people, I'm presuming, we would pick up here locally. So the T5s, they have a choice there. Then we have others that would require the man lift. Page Six shows- Page six shows wall packs, I chose wall packs out of a catalog that I use for all kinds of things, I've used for the farm, and the church, and that, and I'm very pleased with the company. And I put labor in pretty high, because this is, could've taken an electrician up on the man lift, change the lights. So that's got to be paid for. Disposal, I had no idea. I put dollar in. The lamp itself is the only thing I have to worry about, the rest of it's cast aluminum, has value. The large wall packs that I'm looking at would pay back in fifteen, in sixty-two hundred hours, and the town says that they use their wall pack for forty-four hundred hours, so it's about a year and a half. Year and a half on that. Smaller wall packs, there are some around the buildings, similar, that they take a little bit longer, they just pay off in seventy-nine hundred hours, which is about two years. And again, a lot of hours, and they're used a lot, so that's why they pay off faster. Now, there's a couple of barn lights at the transfer station, which are shown for fifty-two hours a year. As you can guess, they all pay off. The barn lights, we have to replace the whole thing, and that has labor as well, and I'm looking at thirty-eight hundred hours to pay the barn light back, and at fifty-two hours a year, the thing will rust it out and fall off before you ever paid for it. And so, and it's not like any others, so I don't know that there be reason to change it, just leave it. Pole lights, there's some pole lights here in this parking lot, they pay off at fifty-one hundred hours, again, the town says there's forty-four hundred hours in use a year, so the thing pays off in a year and a quarter or so. And that's, again, has labor in it, that uses the man lift. And there's some power thirty-eights, these are little screw-in spotlights at the transfer station, believe it or not, the most practical place to get them is Market Basket. And they pay off in nine hundred hours, the town suggests that they're using them twelve hundred hours a year, so they pay off in three quarters a year. And the labor to install them is, you just go in.
Let me ask a question.
Please.
What percentage of the lights in this building can we change just by putting in a bulb? Nothing else, just take out the old bulb, put in a new bulb? All of them, half of them, eighty percent of them?
Probably eighty percent. That's why I said the low-hanging fruit is the T8s.
Eighty percent is low-hanging fruit, so... I mean, that's why we're not talking about anything else, other than taking the grid out of the fixture, turning the bulb ninety degrees, comes out, whatever.
Yep, yep. And they're sold in, the blue light ones are sold in case lots of thirty at Home Depot, I could not get a box of them.
There'd be no malice involved, nothing, just change the light bulb.
That's right, yeah. So that's no, not anything electrical taking place. Now, you could consider changing all of them in the building, even the ones that don't pay off, and that way they're all the same. So you don't have any fluorescents left, they're all LEDs, even the ones that economically aren't an advantage to be LED, that way you don't have any fluorescents left. And getting rid of the fluorescents through the transfers, they got one to be bulging, they're all gone, so that could be an advantage.
I have a question for the chairperson of the trustees of the trust funds.
Who happens to be here this evening?
Really?
You got lucky, Scott.
John Tappin, Chair and Keeper for Trustees of Trust Funds.
Well, I want to speak to the chair, not the bookkeeper.
Okay.
I have a question for you, John, you heard the presentation by Mr. Banks, and I know you can't speak for the trustees, but in your opinion, source of funds for this, if we're replacing light bulbs, that I would view as an operating expense, not a capital expense, therefore we could not access the town building trust fund. For the particular things that we're changing out, light bulbs, like the fixture itself, would they consider that underneath that?
I believe we got an answer from the trustees on that question way back when.
The first part?
The second part.
The second part, but the first part?
We have given you an answer, and I was just looking to see if I had a copy of it, I don't seem to. And our answer was that as long as there is analysis which shows that the change in the building results in either greater efficacy, meaning more light for the same amount of electricity, or in some way better quality, then you can, then it is a capital improvement. And the only way, I mean, if you were changing one lamp because that one burned out, please don't call us. But if you're doing most of what's in the building, then it is, and it really doesn't matter what the method is for how it's changed.
Okay.
And the only thing, if I can, so is that answered your question?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you. But I would like to, if I could, as John Tappin says something, which addresses this, and this is something that I have stated before, and Mr. Banks brought it up last week, and that is that there are many luminaires in this building where it just does not pay to replace them. From the work that I did previously with the Energy Committee, had information on two-hundred-and-sixty-three luminaires in the building, and of those, the ones that used the least, that used the least energy, seventy-six of them, twenty-nine percent, account for less than one percent of the energy used. In order, you have some where the annual energy cost is a penny, in twenty-eight cents, fifty-seven cents, eighty-five cents, that's the total energy used. The savings is something like a half of that. You put all seventy-six of these together, and the estimated annual energy use is eighty-five dollars, energy cost, eighty-five dollars. So if you save that, half of that, you save forty-two dollars a year for changing out those seventy-six luminaires. So there are a lot where it just does not make any financial sense to change. And that's something that Mr. Banks pointed out, and I thought that I needed to grab my old spreadsheet and reform that, so it'd have those numbers.
Thank you. We're not, I'm not proposing to change very many luminaires at all.
Well, this is, this is...
You were talking about changing luminaire, I'm just talking about changing lamps.
No, I'm talking about the energy that that luminaire uses, and in some cases, you have two LT8s that are using, the total is using fifty-seven cents in electricity. So the point is, it doesn't matter whether you change it by changing lamps, or you change the whole luminaire, or whatever you do, right now you're only using fifty-seven cents in energy cost a year. So what can you save? You know, twenty-nine cents a year, that doesn't pay you too much, if your savings is that. And so even when you reduce the replacement cost to some of the numbers that Mr. Banks was talking about, many of these still doesn't make any sense to change, it just isn't enough use. So, in fact, some of them, it's so extreme, that even where it is a screw-in medium-based bulb, if that LED lamp was in the supply closet, it doesn't even pay you to have Bill Stevens get it out of the supply closet and walk to the other end of the building and screw it in. Just wait till it burns out fifty years from now.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So are you proposing what they call the type A LED bulbs?
Yes.
Which you're just plugging it in?
Plug and plug.
So you're still using the ballast?
That's right.
Just, again, I think I mentioned this last time we talked, that's the least efficient type of LED conversion. Just throwing it out there.
Those are the most reliable, because historically, the ballast standards were established right after World War II, when they started making fluorescent lights, and the public could buy fluorescent ballasts, were established then. They were magnetic, kind of a brick-sized thing, and those standards existed for a very long time, and then they came out with electronic ballasts, which are much more energy-efficient, but they had to fit in the same space and the same mounting holes as the old magnetic ones. So the ballasts are physically large. Physically large means they can use large components, which electrolytic capacitors and surge suppressors, the bigger they are, the better they are. And they're stretched out, so they run cool. The failure rate on ballast is very small, and it gets smaller because as we drop the wattage from thirty-two watts per lamp to eighteen, or whatever it is, seventeen in that range, they're running even cooler. My experience is, I have T8 LEDs, type A church, I have them in my own facility, I have never lost an LED lamp, nor the ballast it was running with. Those were the ballast, the driver, which is, that's which makes the LED work correctly, like a ballast makes a fluorescent lamp work correctly. Where the driver is inside the lamp, I have lost seven, church to coop in my place, and that's because the components have to be very, very tiny to get them all snuck in there. And electrolytic capacitors is one of those, like Manosa, smaller they are, shorter the life will be. And the stuff is much warmer, and the ability to catch surges is much less. In fact, your LED conversion proposal in there tells you that you are supposed to, or they're recommending that you put in lighting protection, now they meant lightning, they didn't proofread it, so they left the N out, they said put in lighting protection, but they mean lightning protection, because they recognize the vulnerability. They don't tell you that with ballast. You may use a watt more than you would have if the driver were in the lamp, so I'm not disagreeing with Julie, but the life is much longer. I haven't lost anything where I'm using the ballast. Now, one of the things that I wanted to mention was the co-op, the co-op is inducing you to do this by giving you some money. Now, I read thoroughly the co-op's proposal, and there's some things we have to pay attention to here. Number one, you don't do anything until you've gotten permission from the co-op, they have gone over the numbers and decided that they will pay or will not pay for every installation, and there's about seventy different ones. So a lot of those are not going to be something that they'll pay for. And I'm not sure that they will use the town numbers either, because one of the numbers that's on this appendix A is the room out here with the fire engines in it, they're saying, the town has generated a number that says those lights are lit fifty hours a week. And those lights are on motion detectors, meaning that they're out until somebody walks in there, and they only light up where that person is walking or working. I don't think fifty hours of light of all of those lights is a reasonable number in that room. More nearly reasonable in the transfer station, because there are lots of people in there at one time, and they're so high that the area that they're looking at is much bigger on the floor, so somebody in quite an area can set the lights off, much more so than in here. So the co-op is going to look very closely at numbers like that, and my guess is that they're not going to give you very much. Plus, in fact, you can't do anything until they've done it, until they've gone over it. My recommendation is, we don't worry about getting money from the co-op. I don't think it's worth screwing around with, because that's a whole job in itself. Somebody's going to have to manage every one of those seventy different light sources, and have it all so that they can, they can know what they're doing. So my recommendation is, we don't, we don't attempt to collect any money from them. I don't, I'm not saying you couldn't. I think the outside lights on the posts out there would be, but much of the cost of that's putting them in, and that's with the man lift and electrician, and we really won't know what that costs until we've done it, and they want to know everything in advance. The only thing they want to give any money for is where they really save some energy for the amount of money they spend. That's their concern. So I think the number's going to be much smaller than the percentage that these other guys are suggesting.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Do you have, Bill, do you have any comment or question?
If I'm requested to speak, I shall speak.
Well, you're requested to speak. Because one of my big issues is liability, I just want to make sure that we don't have any problems with it.
Bill Booth, building inspector. I agree with everything that Jim has said. However, the logistics of installing it, the man lift, we need a certified operator to run that, it's not just as easy as renting it from a rental place, we need an operator, and we need a two-man crew typically, anytime that I've worked doing high bay light replacements, you work on a two-man crew. So those logistics need to be ironed out. If, if the co-op won't provide money for us to do it ourselves, are we, you know, I know Jim just suggested that we don't look at that money, but is that money that we're just blowing away by not, by not looking at that? If we were to, I agree, all the, all the bulbs, although what Jim referred to as low-hanging fruit, that can be replaced without an electrician, that can be replaced by staff at the town. When we move to the high bay in the fire department and at the recycling center, I have a hard time asking Bill Stevens to do that work, you know, that's, that certainly, that's high bay work, it makes me uncomfortable at those heights to work on a lift, shifts around, moves. Anytime the line voltage has to be cut, we can't ask Bill Stevens to do that work, we have to make sure that that's done by an electrician, a licensed electrician, just for liability.
And that's what would be the case of the light poles and the wall packs?
Yep.
Because those fixtures would be changed.
Absolutely.
The T5 lamps in the two high bays are just lamp change.
Yep, and so those would absolutely have to be a licensed electrician to do those. One of the, one of the quotes that I read through specified a three-week time period. I'm not sure how long this is going to take, but if we have to rent the equipment, and the installation gets interrupted, then we have to rent the equipment again. So we have to think about the equipment for this building, and then the equipment at the recycling center has to be two different times. The equipment that's rented here would have to be picked up and brought there. So when they said two master electricians for three weeks, does that seem about right to you?
Well, they're changing all fixtures.
Sure.
I have no way of...
Yeah, so the three weeks, whether or not they would, you know, work in three solid weeks, or whether they're going to come back to the job, they have their own equipment, so that they can just bring in a bucket truck, and they, you know, they have that equipment to use. Renting equipment is, you know, Pete is our certified operator, Pete Hoy, so he would have to be available.
The equipment we're talking about renting is the man lifts for the high bays?
Yes.
The transfer station and the light poles, basically, is that right?
Yep.
So a good portion of the work can be done with a couple people and a step ladder and a bunch of workers.
In this, yep.
And the T8s.
Yep.
Not the highway garage?
Right, no, the...
No, highway garage is not, it wasn't on that list that I was given.
The T8s are like what Jim is talking about here, those are things that Bill Stevens does regularly, and that's part of his daily routine.
Now, there are electricians that have man lifts, they own them, and we can bring something like that in and have them change the lamps. We hire them to change it, we supply the lamps, we get rid of the old lamps, they go up on the lift and do the work. So that's certainly doable, that's not something you can't do.
And I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but Jim has also offered to take away, if there was any lights to be replaced, he had offered to take those, so that if there was a...
A ballast.
A charge or something, that he maybe can defray the cost of that.
But not the lamps?
No.
Not the lamps?
Recycling the lamps is a cost that we have to, can't get out of that either way.
Can I ask a question? If we were to do...
If we were to do, as we call it, the low-hanging fruit, the ones that make sense to replace that have a relatively short payback, why would you need to get rid of the lamps? Couldn't we keep them here and use them as replacements as other ones that we didn't replace?
You could. But in all likelihood, the ones that you didn't replace, it takes a long burnout. It'd be a long time.
Well, I guess my question is, why would you throw away something that's still good when you could use it again? I don't know if you have a place to destroy it.
You certainly could. In fact, when the town... Remember, the town has done the lamps over once before. And after they did that, then they had a relamping about four years after that. And I grabbed all the ones that still worked that they took out, because they changed everything. Because we use them in church, I have a little bit that I use at home. So all the ones that worked were saved. I'll never use them all.
Well, just the thought is, if they're still good, why pay somebody to take them when they're still good? You could still use them, but it's just...
That's certainly valid.
I have a couple of comments today. I know a little bit about this stuff, but not a whole lot. First of all, I know there's cool light and warm light. With respect to question tubes, one's shifted more towards blue, one's shifted more towards red. Usually, when these guys propose these things, there's a lighting engineer that's involved. So they understand the color rendering index of the lights and so forth. I am concerned a little bit about overall liability at this point, as you mentioned. You would be putting the lamps in, I can't...
I'll put lamps in. I'm not physically touching anything that I know of.
So that would mean our personnel at this point, which I feel it could be a liability issue. So I do have concerns at that point.
But they change the lamps anyway. The same people changing...
I know, but it's... They're changing. I understand you're just replacing bulbs, and I do understand that part of it. But we do have a bid contract out there. Now messing around with the bid contract again.
Well, I'm not expecting that we're going to use sixty thousand dollar bid contract. Because we're not looking at numbers like that at all. And the payback... Remember, their payback time is in the range of five years. And part of that was because they were changing a bunch of stuff that never paid back. So the average of everything got much longer than the low-hanging fruit.
Well, how do you get sixty thousand dollars? You mean not counting the rebate?
Yes.
What is it after the rebate?
If you take the low bid, the... This building after the rebate is twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy. And the transfer station after the rebate is six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
That's assuming the rebate is that amount in reality.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Although I think they... I mean, before they submitted a proposal, they spoke with NHGC and were... I don't want to use the word pre-approved, but that's similar to what the term is.
It appears to be that they're more detail-oriented with the LED conversion bid, where they're warning that not all this stuff may be able to get the rebate.
Prescreen, sorry. Both LED conversions and revision had submitted preliminary proposals for me to prescreen. They both qualified for the program, which is a maximum thirty thousand dollar incentive combined. That's from the gentleman at NHGC.
Okay, that's the program. But when they actually get down to auditing the thing, the number that you get may not be anywhere near that. Revision is simply saying you get thirty K. The other guy is saying, maybe not. They're using the word estimate in there.
I have a question. And I'm asking education. So you're going to take the light bulb out, and you're going to put an LED light bulb out? Is that going to maximize our LED? Because I know at my house, I had a... They had to... An electrician had to convert something in there to get the maximum LED benefit.
Yeah, no, he's proposing to just what's called like plug-and-play. So you leave the ballast in place. Your electrician probably did something else where he took out the ballast.
And I got the maximum.
Right.
Is our quote with that, or just changing the bulbs?
No, it's a retrofit. It's taking...
Rip the whole thing out, start over.
Well, they leave the frame in, and they take the guts out.
So, no disrespect, we're not comparing apples to apples.
No.
Okay.
No.
Gotcha. So you're getting halfway there, that's all the way next.
Well, the difference is not very much. Maybe one watt out of twenty. You're not talking about big numbers difference.
Okay.
Because when it comes down to it, I understand all that. I look at this, we're going to have to use town personnel to do this. It's not what you're hired to do. Change a light bulb once in a while, but not to retrofit or change a lot of light bulbs.
Well, I'm going to change them in the future. So I got to change them all now instead of changing them over a long period of time.
John?
John Taffin, 187 Steppichance Road. The question just came up about how you're comparing apples to apples. And I haven't heard any description yet, a true description of what fruit we're actually talking about. And you need to be comparing on CCT, color correlated temperature, CRI, and life. And with life, you really need to know exactly how it's rated, because there's a number of different ways of rating it. You can get radically different numbers for the same lamp. I've seen one lamp where rated one way, it's fifty thousand hours. Another way, it's over a hundred thousand. And a third way, it's approaching three hundred thousand. And you need to know what the rating, the life rating method is. And then, if you know that for all the things that you're proposing to do, then you can be comparing apples to apples.
But we don't have... I don't think we, the town, has...
We don't have the experience.
We have the expertise to know that.
That's what lighting engineers do.
Yeah.
It's simple.
I think we have to also be kind of practical. I don't know of any specifications for lighting in these two buildings that had to be met. It isn't like a tunnel at the DOT requires a certain brightness level, and it has to be that. We've lit the room. If the room is ten percent brighter or ten percent less bright, your eyes will adjust themselves, and it won't the same.
That's correct.
You can't look at something and see how many foot candles it is, because your eyes are adjusting themselves to the brightness.
This is a never-ending story. This has been going on for how long now, starting with the energy committee?
I think it's years. Because, yeah, let's not forget, this was an energy committee project. And they're the ones that were pushing to get this done.
And they're the ones that initiated the study and et cetera, et cetera.
And your comfortable house.
And...
This is one of those things, when you're up here, you know a little bit about lots of things. But this is one of those things where you've got to know a lot about whatever this subject is. And I don't think the three of us are qualified to say, yes, we need to do this. But it's based on the experts that we have come before us.
I mean, if we just look at dollars, we could make a, you know, okay, change the bulbs.
Well, I would also say, I mean, you put in fifty cents an hour, or no, fifty cents an hour, fifty cents a bulb for the labor cost.
On a step ladder.
That's giving Bill Stevens some speed.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's a legitimate cost factor, but...
Well, if you want to add a dollar to it, it just changes the payback time a little bit.
And I just still... Again, one of my concerns is what we just talked about, the lighting level, the lighting color. I mean, we could guess, I suppose.
But do any of the proposals address those factors, the lighting colors, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
Would you recognize Mr. Taffin?
Mr. Taffin, please.
I know, well, that's...
You don't need to re-engineer the lighting requirements of the room. And as was just pointed out, your eyes are not going to see a ten percent difference, because our eyes react logarithmically. So all you need to do is look at what you have and say, do you like it? Look at the lamp. What is it? Is that a thirty-five hundred? Is it a four thousand? Is it a five thousand? I don't think it's a five thousand. And that's what you replace it with, unless you think you want it bright, more blue, or you want it more yellow. As far as CRI, if you come in here and you say, something is really wrong with this light, because when I was outdoors, my shirt was green, and now it looks brown, well, you want higher CRI than what those are. You can find out what those are. It's really not rocket science, but it is a lot of little numbers. You just need to write them down and compare them.
Well, who's going to do that? It's just, that's why we were going to hire a company to do it. That's all I'm saying.
You're going to pay for that. Here's what I would like to do. I'd like to go to Home Depot, buy a box of lamps, and stick them in, see if you like it. If you don't like it, I own them, I take them out, and they're done.
It doesn't work, that's it.
That's another way of doing it. And in fact, one of the companies did that with one of the lamps in the stairway.
That was before this process, I think.
It was way into the beginning of this process.
Yeah.
Correct.
Can I make a...
And that's a reasonable...
I hear Mr. Lacorse's question in terms of, or concern about liability. Could we solve that particular liability issue by saying, let us hire Mr. Banks? Or... Because then he's an employee of the town, then he should be covered liability-wise. Correct?
Well, I just heard him say he wasn't proposing to change any of the light bulbs, so I'm not sure what liability...
Well, I just said I would. I'll change them in here. I'll buy a box, I'll change them here, and see what you think.
I mean...
We'll change half of them, and see which half you like.
Except for the issue that Mr. Booth brought up with the man lift and the high bays, that would to me be a liability issue.
No, no, I'm just talking about it here.
But the... I don't think we need to do that, because if you say, hey, we're just going to change all the light bulbs in here to LEDs, and Mr. Banks is going to pay out the LEDs, I don't see that there's much of a liability issue with that, unless the bulbs are incompatible, and the fixture blows up, and I don't know.
Well, we've taken care of that.
All right. So what if we go ahead with the idea that we do a fifty-fifty split and see if we have any...
No.
That's too qualitative, is it, or what?
All right. My answer is, you let the people who know what to do, and do it at this point.
So you want to go with one of the proposals?
Absolutely. Even though I appreciate all the effort that Jim's put into this, it hasn't changed my mind any. So I'm going to put this on the floor and see where it splats, all right? Okay. I move to grant the town minister authority into a contract with LED conversions to convert the lights at the safety complex and transfer station. Send contract not exceed the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars plus six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars funds that come from the town building capital reserve. Just kind of move this, get us off the tack.
We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Booth, please.
But...
Sorry?
But...
We need a second.
We have a motion on the floor. I think we've discussed... I think we've discussed enough. Can we take it to a vote?
You haven't had a second.
Ah, that's true.
Mr. Brown, you could say it.
I'll second it.
Restate my why I put this on the floor. First of all, I got to get off the tack. So that's the only way to get on the floor and move it forward at this time. We have bid proposals in. We have the information there. There are licensed people to do this kind of work. They've got to hire an electrician, they'll do it. They have the lifts. Why expose our town employees to do this kind of labor? So I'd like to go forward with the bid process.
The only question I have is, this bid, if we were just evaluating bids, would this be the best one? The one that...
They'll be the apparent low bidder in reviewing it. I guess I don't have any reason to think that they can't do the project. This is what their company does.
I personally think some of that... I don't agree with that particular bid, because we're changing things that we're not... They're losing money. I'm not in favor of this losing money just to say that we changed it. There's enough of these things that are listed here that do not make sense dollar-wise to replace. I can see some of them in terms of the ones with higher usage that make sense. But I'm not in favor of spending all that money to replace bulbs, just to say we replaced bulbs. We're losing money. So I'm not in favor of the town losing money just to say that we replaced the bulbs or the fixtures. So that's where I am. So I'm not in favor of this.
Well, at least we get unanimity.
I guess we'll agree to disagree.
We agree to disagree, but I do know the difference that even though with respect to the intensity of light, people do notice color differences in lights. And this one, you would see it if you go into sometimes some of the biggest stores where they have the cool light or warm light, the red is hue versus the blue. You can see the differentiation in the room, which is psychologically not acceptable.
Well, I'm not talking about light color. I'm talking about replacing things that don't need to be replaced because they're going to lose its money. I'm not in favor of spending twenty dollars so I can save fifty cents over the next ten years. It doesn't make sense.
This is a goodly amount of money, but this is not a disaster.
Well, it's not a disaster, but I'm in... I'm not in favor.
We can agree to disagree.
That's what I said. That's what I said.
Thank you.
Okay. Call a question, please? Yes?
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
What she carries. Thank you.
Can you call for the nays? I'm sorry, what?
Call for the nays. Is anybody voting?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Abstain?
No abstain, please.
Thank you.
Budget calendar.
Next.
Budget calendar.
Budget calendar.
So as we do every year, Town Secretary and I review the master set of dates that we receive from NHMA, which follows the statutory requirements for the budget season for a town with SP2 and has its meeting in March. There's a whole list of them. Okay. So the calendar that was in the agenda packet is what we're proposing. I just want to point out a couple of things, as we have done in the past years. We're recommending that the deliberative session be on the first possible day, which is February 2nd. We are suggesting that the regular select board meeting that fell on New Year's Eve be moved to January 2nd. And the presumed bond public hearing for the town center project be scheduled for January 7th. I mean, that means that we have... Well, we always have a lot of meetings in January. There's almost no way around that. We've scheduled two budget public hearings. The first one on January 2nd. The second one, which is a regular selectman meeting on the 14th. And then a final budget meeting on the 22nd for the board to finalize the budget and the warrant, because it has to be posted on the 28th. So this kind of follows the same pattern that we've done in previous years, where we end up with a lot of meetings in January. This year adds an extra meeting, because we put a separate meeting for the town center public bond hearing. I mean, if you wanted to, you could try to squeeze that in onto some other night. I don't recommend it, but it's your budget calendar, so... So do you have any questions?
No questions. Please, good.
Okay. All right. We will put this, as we do every year, again, in kind of a master posting, because again, we want to make sure that we don't get jammed up with noticing dates and when the meeting is. So we've put the entire calendar out this week. So we don't have any issues with that. All right, thank you. Also, in the agenda packet was a template of a letter that we received regarding the New Hampshire Public Education Funding Fairness Campaign, I think started by the Conville School System. Once again, a number of towns are looking to get support throughout the state to do something about education funding in the state of New Hampshire. So they were asking the various municipalities, and I think school boards, to send a letter, sign on. So I don't know whether the board wants to do that, whether you want to consider it. I did also forward this to Dr. Morse. So the school board's aware of it. Obviously, I don't know what, if anything, they're going to do with it, so...
And when did that come? Just recently?
Very recently. Certainly, sometime since the last meeting, otherwise it would have been on the previous agenda. So I don't know whether you want to have an opportunity to try to talk. I think Dr. Morse is coming soon, in October.
Yeah, the next meeting, isn't it?
It may be the next meeting.
It is the next meeting.
It is the next meeting.
Whether you want to wait and bring it up with Dr. Morse.
Because it mentions the towns and the school districts.
Yeah, together.
So do you want to add this as an agenda item to talk to Dr. Morse when he's here?
Yes, absolutely.
Probably be interesting.
Yep.
And will you give him a heads up that that's...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is a letter that I received from Jim Banks relative to Deaf Rashard and the offer that they made to town employees and town volunteers. So before I distribute it, I just wanted to make the board aware of it and just confirm with the board that you want me to send this out to all of the employees and the town volunteers.
Yep. Yes? I say yes.
John? Distribute it to...
I'm on the fence of this one.
I'm sorry?
I'm on the fence.
I know. I understand.
It's not an agreement or anything, it's just, it's a privilege to employees and volunteers.
Correct.
Which I think is... If they're going to shoot this, they should shoot it to everybody in the town.
Well, it's a, it's not... It's a privilege to, I guess, some employees, or is it all employees and all volunteers?
Yes.
And at what level is the volunteer?
But they have to use 600 gallons of propane a year.
600 gallons? Yeah, if they use 600 gallons of propane a year.
Correct.
And if they are a volunteer. Now, we have volunteers in several forms, in fact. I mean, it depends on, that's my concern, is when is somebody officially a...
Well, Deaf Rashard has defined it as volunteers of the church in town will be any officer, board, or committee member, or volunteer as identified in its annual report or official committee minutes.
So do we identify volunteers in our...
Not all of them, but there's a lot of, a lot of them, correct.
That's my point.
Correct.
I just feel this is a backhanded way to advertise Deaf Rashard or trying to get them to buy into their products. Same problem I had when I dealt with this with respect to the ECR having the church be involved advertising things, and I said, well, why can't the Catholic Church and Durham be able to put their materials on there as well? I just feel it's discrimination. That's why I'm on the fence. I see why it would be kind of neat when I'm on the fence. So I guess if I'm on the fence, I'm going to go back.
Hmm. Again, what I'm asking is whether the board just is okay with me distributing this.
I'm okay with it.
I'm going to assume that there are already possibly employees and volunteers who are taking advantage of this.
I just don't want the board to select them to bless it, that's what I'm saying. By us distributing, that means we agree, and I'm just not, I don't agree.
It's up to you, Mr. Brown.
We're terrible tonight.
That's why he gets so much...
Well, I've been...
I know.
I mean, I've been on the fence about this for a little while, honestly, so I'm concerned. I'm concerned that we're not, I mean, how are we going to distribute it to all the volunteers? Where's the list of all the volunteers?
Well, they define it as in the, either in, recognized in minutes or in the annual report. We'll just have to go through the annual report, and...
How has this been done previous years? This is not something that's new?
I haven't really distributed it in previous years.
Yeah, we have to probably distribute.
It's kind of like been word of mouth. It's just word of mouth.
That's the point of contention.
But again, I'm responding to the specific request that I received from Mr. Banks to distribute the letter.
And we have a lot of volunteers for the Ad Commission that do not appear in... They don't appear anywhere, but they volunteer every year. They're not in the minutes.
Well, they're not, these aren't our rules. I mean, in other words...
But don't they have to fill out that form to be considered a volunteer?
Yeah, but that doesn't appear in the minutes or in the annual report.
I don't think Deaf Rashard is going to be that picky on...
Well, I don't know.
So, so, but that's a good point, Scott. We could say at least, you know, because somebody's going to say, well, who's the volunteers? And for us, it would be whoever has filled out...
There's a sheet that gets filled out.
One of those forms, right?
So they're covered under the town's...
They...
Sure.
We have volunteers that come and go. Swab shop.
I would make the recommendation that if we're going to distribute it, we just do it based on what Deaf Rashard is setting as their rules. It's not, do you know what I mean? It's not our program. This is, this is their requirement. So if we're going to distribute it, just...
Or we just do it as we previous years in terms of word of mouth?
No. I'm just looking for direction, that's all.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, I guess we should distribute it. That would be, I mean, I don't, at least that way we're saying the program's there, people. Right now, it's kind of underground.
It's like advertiser. I thought we're not supposed to advertise. I feel there's an ethical breach here, and that's, I'm just not comfortable. But if you want to make a vote on it, we could vote, and I'll just cast no, and it'll be rejected.
If I knew how to vote, I would. I just don't know, I just don't know where to go with this.
My bedtime is coming up, gentlemen, so let's move on if we can. So I guess, I guess...
You can leave that up to each committee commission to notify their own members.
Well, that's what, I mean, I would just send it to the chairs of the committees anyway, like we distribute anything to all.
I propose to be instructed, town administrator, to direct this letter to all the chairs of the commissions, committees that are in the town of Leach for their distribution to their members and volunteers.
So they would identify their, not only their members, but also their volunteers?
Let me just discuss this for a second. Let's look at the fair for a minute. Eric's, Eric's group, which is a, would be a pretty long list of people if you had everybody that volunteers to help them put that on. He would, he would then say, okay, here's my, here's my volunteers.
He knows who those people are.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify.
Distribute it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we've got a hanging motion out.
Oh, you, come on.
Second, I mean, somebody's second.
So we'll make a motion.
Yes, you were bedtime, Joe.
I did.
You did? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
I move the instruct, that we instruct the town administrator to send this particular letter to all the commissions, committees that the town of Leach has for distribution to their membership.
Via the chair.
Via the chair.
Of each of said committees and committees.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye. I wonder how Denise is going to vote, because she's...
You're going to have Denise vote?
All right. I'm in favor.
All right. Against?
Any nays?
One against.
Thank you.
Okay.
You may recall that at the advice of the Conservation Commission and also Ms. Rossi, we put out a bid for two pieces of town-owned property that the town acquired by tax deed, and we have the results. We received one bid for each, which doesn't really surprise me, because we got a bid from each, and a butter of each of the properties. So at this time, I would recommend that we sell the properties at the bids that we received.
You want, have you seen the bids?
Yeah, I have. Yeah, I've got it right here. Yeah, we can move forward on this.
Okay, so, move to accept $2,000 from Kenneth and Marlene Abboud for the purchase of the town-owned property at 109 Osprey Lane. Can I get a second?
Second.
Move to accept $1,000...
One motion at a time on the floor.
I'm sorry?
You're only allowed one motion at a time on the floor.
Okay. All in favor then for a motion, the first motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Second motion, move to accept $1,300 from Alan Clay for the purchase of the town-owned property at 64 Tammerack Road. Can I get a second?
Second.
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, just, we occasionally check in with the board relative to where we stand with committees, commissions, boards sending us their minutes for posting on the website. I think, according to the town secretary, she took a look at it. I think we're in pretty good shape, with the exception, one or two exceptions. We have not seen minutes from the cemetery trustees since June of 2017. So we can, again, as we constantly struggle with this, we can only ask, but just want to make the board aware that we haven't seen minutes since June of 2017.
I assume they have met.
I'm assuming that they've met, because...
Well, they chose a section, so they must have met.
Have they posted their meetings?
Didn't they? No, they haven't posted a name.
No meetings, no.
Have they posted their meetings?
My understanding is that the, the only place that I'm aware of where they post meetings is on a bulletin board in the cemetery, which doesn't meet the two-location...
Has to be two places.
...requirement, and that those were the, that posted for the meeting on June of, in 2017.
Can we have the town administrator just write a letter to the cemetery trustees advising the delinquent with respect to the minutes, and the town citizens, town of Leach would like to see those minutes?
Can a town employee file a 91A request?
Anyone can file a 91A.
Can we instruct the town administrator to file a 91A request to the cemetery trustees?
Oh, sure, throw me under the bus.
I'm just making a motion.
I was trying to do it more gently than that.
I was just, make a motion. I retract that motion. Can we instruct the town secretary? We have a responsibility, I believe via RSA's, to make sure all these things are done properly, and they are not being done properly, so I think it behooves us to take some action and just request that particular...
Well, it's the cemetery trustees, the only one that fall in that category relative to minutes.
Yeah, to this extent. I mean, again, if you look at, say, planning board and zoning board, or even this body, there's always a bit of a delay, because you wait until the body has the opportunity to review and approve, because we just have the practice that NHMA recommends of not putting draft minutes on the website. We have them.
Now, I just want to be sure that we're...
We struggled with some.
...across the board, that's all.
Right.
I think if we just put out a formal letter...
But everybody now, I think, I think we've, we're pretty good. We've brought people along.
Okay, so we just put out that formal letter from now. And then we can...
You have a motion on the floor, though, Mr. Chairman. I've made a motion, so we need to deal with it.
Was it seconded?
So I'll second it.
Are we going back to the 91A motion?
That's what I made this.
Okay.
And it's been...
You know what you're seconding? The cemetery motion.
Right, which is that I am sending them a 91A request.
Right. So...
Everything since 2017?
Yes, since the last time that you had minutes. And also in terms of, I don't know, can we request documentation of posting? I don't know what they do for that, but they need to be following the rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I couldn't come up with the second version, so.
Thank you for backing that bus up.
Yeah.
Running a fast...
Yes, I ran it over Julie, and I thought it ran over you, then it ran over Julie, yeah.
Well, they already...
Just spreading the load is what I'm doing.
We've received a request, this request puzzled me, but we received a request from the school district asking that some member of the committee, I guess they mean member of the board of selectmen, participate in a three-day workshop beginning October 15th through Wednesday, October 17th, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., relative to the Oyster River Middle School construction project.
What project? Construction project?
The Oyster River Middle School project, yes. Maybe we don't have to send somebody, they're just asking.
Any volunteers?
The only reason I'm confused, and maybe Mr. Buckley can shed some light on this, isn't there already an Oyster River Middle School committee?
No, they're done.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
Yeah, they forwarded their recommendation to...
That clears up that confusion.
The school board, the school board has accepted it and is moving forward. This is part of the whole process to get you a warrant article in 2020, I think it is.
Yeah.
So...
But you've been attending some of the meetings, haven't you?
I attended all the meetings.
Okay, so there you go.
But three days...
I guess we know who should be attending this one.
That's a big commitment. Read that again, three days? I thought it said...
October 15th through Wednesday, October 17th, a three-day workshop, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Fifteen...
Sixteen, sixteen, seventeen.
And what is it, eight to...
8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Geez.
Then, that's a lot.
Was this the request to use our facility? Was this the...
Yeah, I guess it was.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And now they're having it at the middle school. Does it make sense?
Are they going to feed us?
Doesn't say.
Doesn't say. It says bring your own.
And what is interesting is that they've hired LaValle Brezinger.
Yeah.
So you have friends to do the design.
Friends?
Well, yeah.
I wouldn't go that far.
Only if it's the same architect, yeah.
I wouldn't go that far.
Well, you're not going to go far enough to attend all three days?
I don't know about three days. I'll go and see how long I last, but we'll see. Submit my name, tell them, I'll make as many as I can, how about that?
John, who knows? I might, you know, you might be able to take some time off.
I don't know about that. I got 45 days a year. I mean, come on.
Pretty fucking... I don't think it gets that much vacation today.
The next item I wanted to bring to the board's attention was that we were summoned in a civil action by Market Basket. They filed an abatement with the assessors. I think they want their assessed value to be about one and a half million dollars less than what we're currently assessing it for, which is somewhere around $46,000 in taxes. So this has gone back and forth between Market Basket and MRI. They didn't reach agreement in the time that Market Basket would have needed them to, so they filed, I don't want to say they had to file this, but they filed this to maintain their rights. MRI is still talking with Market Basket and is hoping to come to some kind of agreement. It might have to go to mediation, but any recommendation or any agreement that's reached still has to come back to the board, because the board would have to grant the abatement.
Which would be used for assessing that $7 million? Is it revenue? How did we come to that assessment?
I think with commercial properties, there's three different ways.
One of them is revenue.
One of them is revenue income, and the other one is the value of the property.
So which one did we use?
I think we use the value of the property. As I understand it, they used similar value in either Clermont or Berlin, Clermont, which...
Is economically depressed.
Correct.
Careful.
Right.
I'm sorry, my parents live in the next town, it's economically depressed. I'm sorry.
Well, that was one of the responses that MRI gave. You can't use a property in Clermont to compare it to a property in Leach.
Especially in Berlin, too. Berlin's depressed.
Right. So in any event, this is gonna chug its way through the system.
So we have legal representation or not yet?
Well, I made our attorneys aware.
Okay.
So that's, that was that. I know, $42 tax rate, can you imagine?
We're up to the public safety.
Public safety complex sign. Where's the...
I like the second one.
Oh, I put on the thing in the printing.
I like that one.
Yeah, neon.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's outdoors too. Is this first one outdoors or just indoors? That one that says...
The little, the one with the, the smaller one? Yeah. No, they're all, they'd all be outdoors.
I know, but that one shows it being indoors.
Well, I hope that one was inside. I think they both say outdoor, indoor. I believe they both say outdoor.
Okay, alright. My question is, it says wireless, but can it be connected to our network so you can do it from your...
Uh, I might have to open the safety complex to do it. It's still easier.
Still better being outside.
So that's the cost of the sign plus free shipping. How much to wire it?
Right, then we'd have to get a, we'd have to get a... We'd have to get an electrician and we'd have to get, um, you know, we'd have to somehow be affixed to the existing sign. We just, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting, the board said, see what options might be out there.
Yep.
So if the board still wants us to go in a forward direction, we'll start seeing if we can get what the whole price would be.
Yeah. Forward.
Forward.
Yes.
Now, would you be interested in building, really, a new structure too? Because there's such a nice structure in there that's made out of brick, and I thought maybe we could get Randy to...
So would this fit underneath where the sign is?
Well, I don't know. I, we'd have to find out if that structure is structurally able to hold a heavy sign like that.
How much is a sign like?
I don't know yet.
It shows it's got two pencils holding it up like it.
But the sign we have up here, out there, as you know, is, if you get close enough to it, you can tell that it's kind of...
So is this a static sign, or can it change?
It does all, it does three different things. It does this, and it stays, and it does that.
What's the last one? What is that? What does it do?
I don't want to... It blinks.
Oh, it blinks?
I know, I didn't think you'd want, that's only an option. I mean, if we don't want...
There's no chase lights or anything happening?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Like Vegas. So it's just the black part? Cause the sign above is something extra, right? The slinger?
The slinger elementary school.
Yes, that's all extra for our...
Good show. When you look at these things that has enough, you know, font size, enough font letters, this one looks like it'd be pretty limited, blood dry.
Right, right. Well, but that one's bigger, so I think they just want, that's all they wanted to say.
Yeah.
But I think...
So you have like three lines of text if you wanted to...
I think they, I'm not sure.
Well, maybe that's something you can explore and ask.
And I mean, I'm assuming that you could have multiple messages.
Sure.
It just, if it's a scrolling, yeah.
It says scrolling, yeah.
Alright, so we will proceed with trying to figure out...
And it's multi-color.
Yeah.
Multi-color.
Yeah, multi-color.
Good. Oh, will it display graphics?
One of them does, that I had up there.
Big sale.
Balloons on it or something?
Yeah, the big sale.
Yeah, that is balloon.
But that's, other one doesn't?
I'm not sure.
Okay. That's something to check out too.
Good, good work.
And I believe that's everything I have. Before I forget, I do need a brief non-public at the end relative to the hiring of the new highway superintendent.
Okay. There you go, John.
Yeah, there it is.
Oh, but first we do the consent agenda. I just, I just didn't want to forget.
Mm-hmm, yes. Okay, so, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He attempted to faze John.
Attempted to faze, that's right.
Yeah.
That's a long school, maybe, three days.
Well, that's a design business.
Yeah.
Oh, you have the sign. Oh, I see.
You better do something here.
That's bizarre.
Yeah, they have cafeterias there, right?
Yep, you miss them a bit. Simple probably have to eat at like 10 o'clock or like 2:00. There's so many, I think there's like five lunch periods we get all the kids there in the little school.
Does it require another signature?
Oh, yeah, I see.
Where do I sign here? Where it says assessing official?
Yes. You want to be assessing official, of course.
Yeah, the assessing official.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the assessing.
Yeah, it's only yours, I can't show you neither, can I?
Hmm?
It only needs yours.
Oh, sure, okay.
We need to sign the back and down below. I don't know if they're... Wait, did they? Sticky, oh, because it's front and back. Remember, we missed it last night. Oh, golly. Good luck with that.
Good luck with that. Oh.
Yeah.
What, what, we get some stale stickies?
No, it's a front and a back.
Oh, my goodness.
Ooh, I was cleaning out my office, guess what I found?
The book.
Yes.
Thank you.
The book.
Bring it in.
I'm sorry, do you mean the budget notebook?
No, I am not talking about the budget notebook. I'm talking about another notebook that I've been bringing to me.
Then you insisted we had, you mean that budget notebook?
I am pretty sure that I gave it back, but obviously I did.
Thank you. We did not want to have to make those tabs.
Here we go, here we go. It's on the back of that.
It's a little dusty, so you gotta dust it off. I don't provide dusty services.
Can't be as bad as a certain other person that turned theirs in.
I don't know if she's still talking to me.
I'm not asking.
It's the back alone.
I can't help it, the stickies are falling off. He's a side rail here.
We using detective stickies now, do we?
The back of that one.
Well, I had to put, like this, it would feel the best.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
You risen to the top, Scott.
Ooh, again?
Again.
Jeez, I've been moving.
Why are there two gray ones?
You guys are real all over where position of the signature.
Oh yeah, it's all about stats.
Um, it's all about stats.
So I'm just gonna carry silence. Just need your signature. This is actually, and he's been for the Thompson Mill Road Utility Hall, who voted on it in previous meetings, but they didn't send us the form.
Zip.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, I move to enter into the non-public session pursuant to NHRSA 91 hyphen A colon 3, 2. Can I get a second?
Second.
B, two B's.
B's?
Two B's.
Roll call. Selectmen Buggby, yes. Selectmen McCourage, yes. Selectmen Brown, yes. Okay, to the room. We don't need to seal anything, do we?
No.
Well, yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Okay, I move to seal the non-public minutes. Second. Roll call, do I need a roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Buggby?
Yes.
Mr. McCourage?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes.
I appreciate that.
I let Chairman Brown know that Wally Dennis passed away last week. I wasn't sure what, like, anything.
Yeah, John and I talk.
Okay.
But, well, when we get to other business.
Yeah, we need to get to miscellaneous unfinished business. Anybody?
In saying vain, Mr. Dennis has passed away, who is the holder of the Boston Puskeen. So can we direct the administration to find out who the now oldest?
Who's the new recipient?
Yes. Of the Boston Puskeen.
We need to identify the new recipient of the, of the cane.
Yep.
I don't know if it's...
I put feelers out.
Okay. Mrs. DeRapo, it's probably up there. Cause you still have the list from when we gave it to Mr. Dennis.
Well...
Mr. Ward was number two, but he's passed.
Right, and I didn't, I can't find that I had anybody else.
Uh, Mrs. DeRapo, she's...
She's, is she 90-something?
She's 80-something.
Okay, there's somebody that's 90-something.
Okay. Well, you guys can figure out who it is.
Yeah.
Um, the TCVC, well, part of us, TCVC met with LBA last Thursday and Friday, so we did programmatic meetings, so that went fine. And we have a similar meeting with the library this Friday, so to go for that. Also this Friday, the, um, LBA...
Thursday.
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 Oh, sorry, Thursday, sorry. Um, and then Thursday, we'll, yes.
27th.
Thursday, we meet with the library for programmatic meetings, and also on Thursday, during the same time period, the subs from LBA are gonna here, train the buildings. So Bill and Dorf Kristin, he's gonna go around with them to get the town center buildings. So that's progressing. They have also given us homework, um, and I might defer to Mr. Tappi, cause he probably knows exactly, but they have asked us in terms of, give us, give them some indication in terms of what to do with the annex.
With the what, I'm sorry?
The annex.
Oh.
Should it be used? Should it be moved? Um, and also in terms of the location of where the commissions, committees should go? Should they be in the renovated town hall? Should they be in municipal building? Should they be in the annex? So some kind of direction, they're looking for a direction from us in terms of what our thoughts are. They just don't wanna go out there and provoke something, and we're thinking, well, they should be here, and they do something totally different. So they're looking for some direction from us.
Is that captured?
Yeah, he actually asked for multiple scenarios.
And if there's any, what was it? I use the term sacred cows, but he said anything that you're specifically, it has to be the...
That's very important, anything is very important to us, like keeping A or getting rid of B or...
Does the select board have any...
Sacred cows?
...thought on the annex?
Tear it down. Get out, lifted juice from this a long time ago.
I don't know, I talked to, I just had a fast bump in with one of the library, uh, I'm sorry, with one of the museum people who indicated they'd be very interested in using the annex building for what it's worth.
Move our forward police chiefs, Mr. Burke, wants to burn it down as well, so you've got a fellow there.
I have a fellow.
Yes, he wants to get rid of it as well, so...
I think, I mean, obviously, the, except for the recreation commission, the other commissions all use town hall right now, both for their files and meeting space, and the conservation commission has an office on the second floor. Certainly that can continue, but I think, you know, we still run into the issues of that second floor really shouldn't...
It's really, yeah, getting up there is bad.
Really shouldn't be used. You know, I meant, obviously, and we talked, um, so then if you, if you say, okay, well, we really shouldn't keep using the second floor, but I don't think you would wanna use the first floor because I think the idea is you're gonna have that a big open meeting space. I mean, obviously, they can meet there, but maybe not line it with file cabinets. Then it seems to me that you come down between, do you spend money to build more square footage to accommodate the commissions in the new municipal building, or for example, do you use the annex, which is already there, and require probably fairly minimal work to make it usable for the commissions?
For meeting rooms, yeah.
For meeting rooms? You have to put a new roof on it.
Well, that's, that's part of the question. The other part is, do you move the building itself?
Right.
Do you use it, but do you move it? One of the things that he's asked us to think about is, because I don't think we ever, well, excuse me, I'll take that back. One of the things I haven't thought about is possibly moving it someplace else. But he pros, uh, gave us the idea of maybe moving it someplace else on the same site.
Right.
Because it's taken up some prime real estate in the front.
It's probably more viable.
But the other thing is in terms of, you know, where is it, but how to use it? So those are two parts of the same question. The other thing he gave us, which I think members of the committee were like, we kinda, kinda knew this, but we had to have him tell us, the, the proposal that we gave to the delivery session in terms of the square footage costs are ridiculously low. Um, I think they're gonna be way more than that based on his feedback that he gave us. So that's gonna be a cost factor, a factor as well in terms of, you know, the increased costs, so.
Going about the square footage, you remember?
Yeah, because, John, do you remember, it's like 125 for a renovated space and 350 or 3...
I do remember what he told us to do with the numbers he gave us.
Okay, alright.
Which was, don't disseminate until you're certain.
Well, I'm just going by what he told us in terms of square footage rate, not what it cost to be.
The, the unit cost that he suggested.
Okay.
He said, but these are ones that, I mean, it's just one that he pulled out of the air.
I thought he was basing it on what he, well, whatever.
It's what he thinks it might be, but he cautioned us that you should not put that number out because that number has not been derived by the people that actually add up the pieces and see what it really costs.
The estimators.
Correct.
But it's way more than what we...
Okay.
So that's a concern. That's a concern for me. The other thing is, we had a meeting with him because we were, um, had a couple of issues, and that's why you saw that we've done, so just hopefully had a chance to look at that, so...
What's the latest on the church property?[1700.62]